Good evening and welcome to the Township of Woolwich Committee of the whole meeting on Tuesday, March 7th, 2023. We are now live on YouTube. I will start with a roll call of council. I councillor Kado and present in chairing this meeting, Mayor Shants. I hear a present with some technical difficulties councillor Bryant.
Present my mic won't work either.
It's going to be one of those nights councillor Birds.
Present.
Councillor Grant.
Present.
And councillor Schwint.
I'm present.
Thank you. So we need to move a recommendation to reconvene in open session. Do I have a mover? By councillor Burgess, seconded by councillor Grant. So council will reconvene in open session. We will proceed to our land acknowledgement. Sorry, I need to get a vote on that. So can we move to open session? All in favor, carried, you know, thank you Jeff. So I'm now going to proceed to the land acknowledgement and I want to acknowledge the land on which we live has been here from time immemorial and that indigenous people have lived here from time immemorial. I think the Chinauton also called the Andauwanaran, the Anishag Bay and the Hueda Dushoni people who have been here and cared for this land and continue to share and steward this land with us. May we together learn to care for each other, our flora, our fauna and the land that sustains us. Thanks Jared. It sounds like it's on and then it's not. So hey, it's one of those things. Um, next item, are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest? Seeing two. Oh, so I can't. Why is there a pecuniary interest?
I have a pecuniary interest on item 10.1, the capital paving as a resident of Maryhill and within close proximity to that site.
Thank you Kayla, councillor Grant, I mean, and councillor Brian.
It's 8.2 for me as well, capital paving. 8.2.
Thank you. Seeing no others. Um, we'll move on. There are no items to come forward from closed session. There are no public meetings. There are no presentations, but we do have some delegations. Uh, before we hear from the delegates this evening, I'm just going to read you the following instructions. Um, so you have a maximum of seven minutes to speak unless councillor or the clerk has set a different time. There will be a timer on the screen and you will hear a warning when you have one minute and then again when your time is up. Once you're finished, please wait for questions of clarification from council. When there are no more questions for you, please turn off your microphone or return to your seat. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the discussion and or the meeting if you would like to, or you're also welcome to leave quietly whenever you wish. Council discussions and debate will start when all questions of clarification have finished. So with that, Leonard Weaver is delegating tonight to request a half load exemption on the Florapine Road.
Hello, I'm Leonard Weaver, owner of the property at 71 Florapine Road. We have an on-farm business there that's in woodworking and we're seeking permanent exemption from the five tonnes per axle from March 1 to April 30. And the exemption would be for the small stretch of Florapine Road, not for the whole road, just for the stretch between Florida Road and 71 Florapine Road. An allowance for one or two trucks per week is all that is needed. At the present, it's probably just about one truck every three weeks, but I decided in future years it might come up to one or two trucks per week.
Thank you very much. Um, also I'm wondering if committee has any questions for the delegate? Oh councillor Schwint.
Just wondering how this came to be as an issue or is there any background information you could pass along to count?
Yeah, I could do that. The reason why it's an issue is because we're getting lumber in from Quebec. And the truck comes all the way in from Quebec and then it can't go the last half kilometer. Because it's too heavy, like it has a little bit more tonnes per axle than the five tonnes per axle that's allowed. And between March the first and April the 30th is when the trucks may not have more than five tonnes per axle on township roads.
Mayor Shants.
Yeah, thank you. Can you give us a little more background on your business and what you said you're in wood? Can you?
What we're doing?
More about that, yeah.
We're into the backyard privacy fencing. So we buy it in like a rough two by six and then we mill it down to like a backyard fence. You probably know what I'm talking of, like the six foot high, one inch, five eight thick product. So, and it's not that the trucks are loaded to maximum, like we usually, we sooner come out to the 13 feet, six inches, the height of the truck and all full before we're at the maximum weight for a truck. So it's not that it's like a heavy cement truck.
Councillor Bridges.
Through your chair, Kado, to the delegate. Um, in previous years, were you getting just a yearly exception or is your business growing and you're bringing in bigger loads now or?
We just built the shop last summer. So this is the first year we're into half load. So.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, can you not bring in your load previous to the March 1 deadline? Bring in enough product to get you through that two month period when you can't bring the heavy loads onto the roads?
We had considered that option too, but it's, we are actually stocked full in the yard and now it's shipping more product out. And because we're only allowed a maximum storage area in the yard. Otherwise it gets too big for the countryside. And then we'd rather like moving product out again to the pressure treaters. So we don't have all this volume of lumber sitting around there. So.
Any other questions? How do you get from, how do you get that last leg with the product if it's coming all the way from Quebec and it makes it all the way to the, the last kilometer or two that you say you have to? How do you get the product from the truck to your shop then or your property?
Well, right now we're not shipping anything in because it's March now. If I'm just kind of putting everything on hold, we're working on product that we have in the yard. So.
All right, seeing no more questions, um, I'll ask you to return to your seat. Thank you very much for the delegation. We appreciate it.
Thanks for hearing my problems.
All right. Is there any items for further discussion? Any questions of staff or councillor Schwint?
So questions for staff, um, through you, Mr. Chair, curious, are there any other, sorry, are there any exemptions? In general for half load season, I guess number one.
Uh, as director Pupay is getting his microphone.
Thank you through you, Chair Kado, to councillor Schwint. There are some permanent exemptions that the township has right now in effect. Um, it was be three bridges. Uh, Talob Singer line on Henry Street in St Jacobs for home hardware, believe. Uh, Menno Street is, was an exemption which is no longer required because Menno Street now has been reconstructed to support the heavy truck load. So um, that restriction can go away because that really that road now on Menno doesn't need a, a half load exempt or a half load requirement. Um, and then, um, the development on Greenhouse Road, uh, to support the Thomas Field Homes, uh, piece. There's a little stretch of Greenhouse Road. That that is to be reconstructed as well. Um, thank you. And, uh, and so that, that therefore that's why that exemption was granted. Outside, there is no permanent exemptions.
Yeah, follow up councillor Schwint.
Yeah, so I should know this law and I don't. Um, growing up, I thought agriculture products, repairs for products were exempt. Is that? Just know the wise tale or?
Help me out please. No, you through you, Chair Kadota councillor Schwint, that is not a wise tale. That is, uh, that's fact. The Highway Traffic Act does exempt, uh, farm from equipment from half load season. So keep, uh, milk can keep coming and, and farm equipment can keep rolling all year round.
Councillor Bryant.
Thank you. Um, we have a huge infrastructure deficit. Is this going to cause a lot more damage or are we going to have a lot more people coming forward looking for permanent exemptions if we grant one? Are we going to be setting a precedent going forward?
Um, through you, Chair Kadota councillor Bryant. I think staff's position is that, um, we need to protect the road network. We wouldn't be in favor of exemptions. The damage to the road is that it's most susceptible during what we call the spring breakup period, which is when frost is in the ground and then, and then the, uh, the granular becomes saturated with all the meltwater. Um, that is the most susceptible and that's the reason that the ministry initially. Neither one, thank you. Neither one, um, are in good shape. Um, they're, uh, they need reconstruction. The, the, the challenge is that despite them being in that state, um, we did some research and just looked at what the heavy truck, uh, loading was on that particular stretch of road. And it averages about 34 trucks per year, which works out to about point six six trucks per week. So just adding one to two trucks, one and a half to three times now, the impact on that road. Um, if we were to reconstruct a road for truck traffic specifically that we knew we were going to get a lot of vehicles on there, you would put a lot more asphalt on that'd be a significant cost. So I think therein lies the challenge. If, you know, if, if we want to look to various pathways to support heavy trucks and to support some of the business community, I think that is certainly something that we need to tackle at a budget, uh, time.
Mayor Shants.
Thanks through you to Jared. Do you have, um, any suggestions for Mr. Weaver on, on how he could handle? Um, handle that? Like is, is there any other solution or anything that would be acceptable?
Through your chair Kadota to Mayor Shants, um, I guess interesting, it was a storage space issue. I don't know if that's something that can be visited, uh, with planning, uh, staff or if that's maxed out. Um, the other option would be if, if I appreciate that you're having trucks come from along a long way, they're loaded, you want to maximize that. Is there a way to offload out of some other location and just, you know, bring that, uh, that acceptable weight down that road? Is that a possibility? Is there a place to store, um, the material in another location? I, because regional roads do not have, um, load restrictions on them. So we know that we've got a, a decent arterial network in the township as far as the regional road network that, uh, they're not under that load restriction. Um, so there is opportunity like that, but I don't know the exact situation or, or what, uh, Mr. Weaver had is at, uh, his disposal at all.
Councillor Schwint.
Through you, Mr. Chair, just wondering if staff could comment on the general, I guess, obedience to this law in the township. As an observer, I think there'd be quite a few trucks in half load season that are over the five ton limit.
Do you chairman Kadota councillor Schwint, every year we, um, we provide a letter to Waterloo Regional Police Services to ensure that they do enforce, um, the half load. That is under their purview, uh, as with ministry, transportation can also enforce that. Um, a couple of years ago, we were aware that, uh, what are the regional police services were investing in more scales um, and undertaking that exercise, but I can't speak on, 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 it's, it's probably very much like speeding. And people can get away with things until they can't. Um, and there's obviously not enough officers on every road, but certainly we are in tune with Waterloo Regional Police Services. And if we become aware, we do, um, we do notify them.
Any other questions? Seeing none, there is a recommendation. No, there is no recommendation on this. Um, so if there's nothing further, we'll move on. No, I see maybe.
Yeah, um, I guess there's no more questions. I'm really struggling with this one that it's, it could be considered as selective enforcement because I know there's industries out there that have to carry on for business reasons, that regular loads. And if Mr. Weaver had a I'm gonna pick on a poultry barn, for example, on his property, pretty sure that feed truck would be arriving as a full load of feed and carrying on. So I'm wondering, I'm not saying that's right or wrong. That's just, I believe that's what happens. So as a township, I think we should be thinking about how we can create accommodations that aren't causing an undue burden on taxpayer to fix the roads, a half kilometer stretch after a 1500 kilometer journey doesn't make sense to me either. So I think this does bear some investigation before we just close the file.
All right. Seeing nothing further. That brings us to the next item. Of the delegation, the mayor Shants.
Yeah, I, I guess, um, councillor Schwint, were you looking for, um, a, a resolution or a motion or is some kind of action to come out of this? Otherwise it just dies here.
That's right. So my first choice, we passed a resolution to give a blunt, get the exemption, but I understand that it's got ramifications and may not be palatable at this point. So I'd like to see um, staff investigate how an accommodation could be made in this instance, what the effect would be on that road for the next, say, five years, we've granted exemption of the road that needs to be uh, fixed anyway. How much damage will we do the next five years if we were to plan, give a blanket exemption and then also come back with a better understanding of how we're doing enforcement and being proactive on this measure because we're talking to police, we send them a letter. I'm curious how many charges related to last year. On that, um, how many stops were even made, that type of thing because yeah, if I was Mr. Weaver, maybe I wouldn't have been here tonight.
Thank you councillor Schwint, councillor Grant.
Thank you, uh, councillor Kadota through you to the rest of the council. Mr. Weaver was mentioning that, um, it may even just be one truck every three weeks. I'm wondering if we could put a motion forward to allow a temporary exemption for this year only. And then follow through with councillor Schwint's idea, looking into this more, um, and how we address these types of.
So, Mayor Shants?
Yeah, I would second that.
All right. So we have a motion on the floor that has been seconded. Uh, we will have a vote for that, I suppose. Do you know what we're, do you have that captured? Do you want to reiterate that so everybody knows?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair, I think what I heard was that, uh, considering the, uh, the delegation that council approves a half load exemption request for Florapine Road, uh, for Mr. Leonard Weaver um, for this year with, um, further information or, or staff who can investigate um, the impact on the road and the enforcement process for the future. That, uh, do I understand that right, council?
Mayor Shants.
I wonder if we want to put a number to that. I, I think you said every three, one every three weeks is what she said. Does that work for this year? So, um, what have we got? Two months? Three. Yeah, Mr. Pupay may help us out.
Through you, Chair Kadota to council. Um, so if, if it's council's desire to grant the exemption, um, what we wouldn't be able to do is put it to a number. So you would basically be granting an exemption for Florapine Road. Um, we could look into relocating the sign to grant the exemption for the section of Floridale or Florapine Road from Floridale Road to just past, um, Mr. Weaver's property. That would just involve relocation of the signs. But I think we just, I just want to counsel to be making the informed decision that you aren't able to grant an exemption for an individual property. It would be granting an exemption on that particular piece of roadway for anybody.
Wondering if that changes anybody's perspective on things or are we still comfortable with the motion?
I, I think with the idea of moving the sign just back far enough to grant that would be a good middle ground as opposed to give granting up for the flow road.
Seeing some nodding. I'm also seeing Director Smith diligently taking notes here. So I trust that he has everything. So we can move this to a vote then. Uh, all in favor of the motion on the floor? Uh, it is carried. Thank you. I do have to ask opposed. So I can't just do the math. Okay. All opposed. Thank you. That motion is carried. All right. So the next item on the agenda is also some, uh, it is the capital paving, uh, Ontario Land Tribunal Minutes of Settlement. So CAO David Brenneman is here tonight to provide us with an overview of this item.
Uh, thank you Chair Kadota, uh, through you to council. Uh, just wanted to, um, note that, uh, in your package, there was an information report of for council. Basically at this point, um, you know, council had previously endorsed the signing and execution of minutes of settlement. Uh, but we want to be very purposeful in release of the information and minutes of settlement. Uh, and that is what has been, um, provided for council this evening. Um, again, more to do with the fact that we wanted to release publicly to be transparent. Um, and, uh, you know, at this stage, if there are any questions, uh, happy to, um, entertain them. Uh, but as, as the chair has noted, I think there's some delegations that want to speak to the issue this evening.
Thank you, CAO Brenneman. Um, so we do have Savannah Goby, our first delegate for this item. So Savannah, when you're ready, you can turn on your video and your microphone and you can begin your delegation when the timer starts.
Hold on, there we go. Yes, can you hear me and see me?
Again.
Okay. Can I start? Am I on timer?
When you're ready.
Okay. My name is Savannah Goby and I moved to Maryhill four years ago. The application for this pit is directly behind my new home. Throughout this entire Shant Station Pit application process, we, the community have, have been compliant and followed each guideline placed before us. We've abided by the process all the while dealing with great anxiety of the potential of losing the security of our peaceful community. We've acted with integrity and trusted the process, which we cannot say about the council and the planning department of Woolwich Township. Now nearing the end of this ordeal, we've learned that a decision has been made behind closed doors. It would appear the integrity of this council has been compromised. What has been made clear is the council and Woolwich Township was not prepared to act in the best interest of the people who live in the community of Maryhill. But rather the people who want to profit from it. The council has supported a business capital paving over its own people who live and raise families here. And furthermore, the council has disregarded the very people who pay their wages. We stood together as a community and voted in Bonnie Bryant and Kayla Grant as councillors, our voice, our representation. But they have no voice and we have no representation. We made presentations, we did our homework. We brought forward information and proven facts, all of which fell on the deaf ears and closed eyes of our planning department and council. This new council was not involved in any of the information presented, but now they decide our future. I'd like to read from the Regional Municipality of Waterloo Act, chapter one. The township has a dual responsibility, A, to the residents of the agricultural lands and to the protection and preservation of the lands for agriculture. B, to provide for the needs and aspirations of the residents within all of the settlement areas. In addition, the township places a high priority on the protection and wise stewardship of the municipality's environmental features and their ecological functions. This entire ordeal has only been an exercise in exhibiting a supreme injustice to our community of Maryhill. The way it's been handled goes against the responsibilities outlined for the township. The township of Woolwich Planning Department did not place high priority on preservation of agriculture or provide for the needs and aspirations of its Maryhill residents. Nor did they place high priority on the protection of the environment and ecological functions. At a time where they could have been leaders and set an example in the area of climate change and indigenous rights, they chose the old age path of greed, power and money. The decision's been made and the, and the damages have just begun. The consequences will be unreparable. In closing, we would like the following questions to be addressed. One, what assurances do we have as a community that when restrictions and limitations regarding noise, dust and traffic from the pit are breached, that the township will act to hold capital paving accountable to the contract and the community? Two, what will township do to support residents in a potential fight with capital regarding rights under the Water Resource Act? Three, who establish a 500 meter radius for wells when this only covers the property that capital paving is leasing? Should this radius not be wider? Four, why are the wells in the northwest corner being monitored and not the ones on the south and east sides? Five, can residents see a copy of the Township Hydrogeology Report? What is the process for allowing homeowners to access the data on their own wells? Where's the form that capital paving's been asked to furnish on the matter of future well, well complaints? Should this not be in the hands of the residents in advance? And six, finally, where do we turn when we have further questions? As the process evolves? Or will our concerns fall on deaf ears and closed eyes then? Thank you.
Thank you Savannah for your delegation. Committee of the whole, is there any questions for the delegate? Seeing none. I will ask that you now mute yourself and turn off your camera. Savannah, thank you. We have another delegation for this item. So John Schuman, uh, I hope that I said your name right. Uh, if not, please do correct me. So if you are on John, you can turn your video on, your microphone on and we'll get you to begin in just a moment. Mr. Shaman. There he is. Hi, Mr. Dazin.
Had a momentary technical problem. Can you hear me? Okay?
We can hear you perfectly and you're not alone in that regard. So you're in good company. Um, so when you're ready, you can get underway.
Okay, give me a minute here to, I've been working in the clinic all day and I usually don't finish till 7:30. So it's been a bit of a rush. Let me see if I can get. I'm trying to figure out if I can show my, uh, my slides here. Let me just have a look here, share screen. Okay. Is that showing up on the screen there?
Yes, it is.
Okay. I really have to also, uh, second the comments made by Savannah. I have a slightly different concern about my clinic, uh, but it's a very long-term concern or they should say it's a short-term concern on a very long history of this clinic. I started my clinic in September, 1978 and I started, uh, following a very different approach, so different that there is no other clinic like this in the world. We have had tremendous coverage and support from the Ministry of Health. And a previous minister of health has been out to the clinic on several occasions, two of which were to cut the ribbon on some major new, uh, technologies and constructions, et cetera, that we had undertaken. What's unusual is that this clinic is in cardiac rehabilitation and pulmonary rehab. This is not something that you will find readily. Usually patients in cardiac rehab nowadays are working in hospitals, uh, in a very limited setting with very little, um, of what I thought was necessary in the beginning. And indeed, um, if you hang on a minute, I gotta figure out. And indeed, if you hang on a minute, I gotta figure out. So this is a shot from the air of the clinic. Unfortunately, this is the very beginning of the clinic, the big addition from two thousand two is yet not on here. And you can see the 200 meter cardiac track. I'm not sure if my pointer shows up there. And you can see it's well treated, it's a natural environment, and you can see the road in the foreground. The space from that road to the track and from that road to the lawn area where we have done Tai Chi and we're going to be starting again when the weather improves enough is very, very short distance. Now, I had some concerns early on when I I felt I was under threat from the project manager of the applicant for this gravel pit. Because he was telling me my truck numbers were wrong and I that he was telling me I had to remove them from public space. I felt threatened. I did speak to people who are legally involved in this kind of thing and they told me about a slap suit. It's a strategic lawsuit against public participation. And there are lawsuits used by wealthy individuals and corporations to intimidate and silence public critics by forcing them into legal battles they cannot afford until they cease their criticism or opposition. I was aware of this in the early part of our excursion into this battle. And by the time we had our first meeting at the township hall on September tenth nineteen, sorry, twenty nineteen, I felt the only recourse I had was to to show that the truck numbers that I was calculating were actually true when they were actually counted and I found out that my calculations were too low. A capital paving was saying there's going to be four point six trucks an hour. My calculation was thirty to fifty. The actual numbers by going to gravel pits that were not cherry picked, they were picked randomly. We had no idea whether there would be any gravel trucks there. The first one had fifty seven, the second one sixty eight, and the next one eighty six. And the eighty six was the one that was the same size, the half a million tons that the Maryhill pit is is going for. We have a 200 meter track. This is not a normal medical clinic. It's not a clinic where you can close the doors and the windows. The 200 meter cardiac track winds in and around trees and natural environment. We have digital telemetry on the track and right at the moment, we're raising money. We need pretty close to a hundred grand in order to update the system to bring it up to the current modern up to date standards. Our equipment there still works, but it's it's a couple of decades old. And you wouldn't be using a cellphone that was twenty years old. And we need to improve this to improve our services to our patients. And this measures a cardiogram, electrocardiograms, which are very vital in the determination of cardiac status and also cardiac work. When someone is exercising these, you have to be safe as well as effective. And the best modern intensive care units and coronary care units have equipment like we have. This this work is done year round and I started in September nineteen seventy eight. And it's been going year ever since then. A few shots of the clinic, I don't want to waste a lot of time. I don't know when my time is up, so I'll have to kind of hurry. We wanted to reduce the clinic feeling and the smell of a clinic. We wanted it to have flowers and outdoors breezes with the wind blowing through and and birds, and that's what we wanted. And it has worked amazingly well. And I've already presented all of this. Unfortunately, the present council, we're not present at the time when this was presented and we're not present in the previous issues that we raised and and the votes that had been held prior to the the election of the new council. It's a serene, relaxed environment that's absolutely critical. And I can talk about it for a very long time, but I can't do it in seven minutes. This is some of the shots of what's going on at the clinic outdoors. And this is a shot of the man hours of exercise, high risk supervised exercise with monitoring that we've had. And you can see in any given year, we are probably averaging somewhere between five thousand five hundred man hours of high risk supervised monitored exercise. We've had actually thirteen people we've had to shock back to life. If they wouldn't have been at our clinic and would have been exercising in their home terrain, they would not have likely been resuscitated. Fortunately, we got them all back. So this gravel pit is going to impact air quality and noise. And I'm not going to talk much more other than to say I've got another slide here somewhere, I think. And that is, I wanted to talk about, and maybe I don't have it in here, I meant to put it in. So what I wanted to mention is that there's the slap law. And in a way, this, the, the slap law potential for solving the problem doesn't exist for a tribunal, which means that those of us who are parties and I'm a party and I'm going to have to give up my status, that means I'm not I'm not have to give up my fight against this gravel pit and and give up my protecting my clinic of forty five years this September. And that's just wrong. And even though I brought all this attention, I've never heard anyone even talk to me about it. So no one's paid any attention to this. Thank you very kindly.
Thank you, Mr. Shaman, for your delegation. Are there any questions from the committee for Mr. Shaman? Seeing none, Mr. Shaman, you can mute yourself now and turn your video off. Thank you very much. All right, is there any further discussion on anything related to the delegations that we've heard so far? Mayor Shants.
Yes, thank you. Just to give some response, I suppose, to the community, first of all, to to Dr. Shaman, you have a beautiful clinic there and I would wish for you that it could stay exactly as it is. Unfortunately, we're in a in a space and time in a situation that is very difficult for everyone. And I can assure everyone that the previous council and the current council and many of you. I've been having trouble with equipment, even here. So so you may have read this, but I'm going to say it anyway, and most of it's a repeat. The previous council and the current council weighed the information from a number of consultants, including our lawyers, regarding the opportunity to put additional safeguards in place for the community. Those negotiations took place and are reflected in the minutes of settlement. So the the important thing that is happening here is if we go to the Ontario Land Tribunal, the 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 total outcome is in the hands of the Ontario Land Tribunal. We've taken negotiations with capital paving. We've listened, we've heard, the previous council are heard and directed our legal council to negotiate with capital paving, taking into consideration what we heard from the community. So normally, those discussions are held.
I, sorry, we, I can't hear anything.
We're having a lot of difficulties with our mics. We've been having them all evening, so they're they're gonna try to. Just give us a minute. Yes. Just keep using the mic. Okay. Just, okay. Apologize apologies, people. This is a bad night for the mics to to do this to us. It's also normal for council to provide direction to our legal council in closed session and because the matter is before the O L T, it's a judicial body and unfortunately, the normal planning process and related public hearings are no longer in play. We, I, we all appreciate that the public would like to see additional public hearings. That's just not part of the pro cents. Once an appeal is filed with the O L T, the decision now rests with the tribunal and is out of our hands. The tribunal hearing is open to the public and is proceeding as a contested hearing as there are other parties that have not yet settled with the applicant. So the previous council directed our lawyer to obtain outside consulting advice from a registered professional planner and a hydrogeologist because of concerns that were raised in the community about the potential impact of the pit on the water supply, especially on the shallow dug wells in the area. The hydrogeologist was satisfied once capital paving agreed to a number of improvements to address concerns around shallow dug wells and tile drainage outlets. The independent experts provided recommendations to council for addressing the water related concerns and capital paving agreed to those enhanced additional monitoring and related protection requirements. So township planning staff, regional planning staff, G R A staff, our peer review consultants, all supported approval of the application. Because of that, there were no technical or land use planning reasons to oppose the application. And unfortunately, this is all about technical land use applications. We can't make those, we can't make decisions based on the fact that people are inconvenienced to to say it in a way that is going to offend people, I suppose. But that's the reality of the situation we're in. So our our hands are tied. We could spend hundreds of thousands of dollars and we could go to the Ontario Land Tribunal and it would end up costing hundreds of thousands of dollars. But there's a like ninety eight percent chance that we would lose and that money would be wasted and the time would be wasted. And in the end, the concessions that we received from capital paving might not be upheld. So that's that's about where we're at. I guess I would ask Mr. Brenneman if he's got anything to add from his staff or process point of view on that.
You, Chair Kado, to to counsel. I mean, I think the only thing I would add based on, you know, my thirty years of experience and and dealing with a lot of development and planning matters is, you know, one of the things I've seen, the hardest thing, you know, often is that planning is such a different type of process in the sense that, you know, we rely on our lawyer and also our experts to advise whether there are, you know, technical and legal merits with 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 respect to whether, you know, we would be successful in in not supporting and and again, fighting at the O L T, any particular development application. And, you know, council does this over the term, you know, often multiple times, not just occasionally, like with this gravel pit application. And I know because I've sat with residents, you know, in our meeting rooms here. And the normal request is, you know, we voted in council. We need them to vote in terms of what our ask is. Unfortunately, again, the planning process is such that council also has to weigh legal merits of whether it is something as opposed to being supported. Council needs to weigh, you know, the 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 technical merits of whether something should be fought or or supported at the Ontario Land Tribunal. And Sorry about that, folks. So I think what what bears, I think what bears repeating is the fact that, you know, what council ultimately had to weigh both councils is you had township staff, region staff, the Grand River Conservation Authority, all of the initial peer review consultants that initially recommended support. And then council went out and said, legal counsel, okay, see if there's anyone that would support that this application not be approved. In the end, council hired planning, a planning consultant, an external planning consultant, an expert and an external hydrogeologist to do further review. And I mean, the result of that was no. What they came back with is there need to be these additional safeguards and additional protect protections. So, you know, in conclusion to all of this, as the mayor noted, council in their wisdom had to say, well, if there's no technical or no land use planning considerations, you know, to fight this application, is it worth going to the O L T and spending two, three? In the past, I've seen this municipality spend four hundred thousand dollars on a gravel pit application. If you're going to spend that type of money, you want to feel confident that you're going to be successful. And that's where we rely on our lawyers and our our plan consultants. I I certainly appreciate in my years of experience how difficult this is for any community. You know, there there was questions tonight around, you know, who gets held, you know, who holds the company accountable if they don't operate? You know, certainly township staff can facilitate and will, as we normally have in the past, the involvement of the Ministry of Natural Resources and their enforcement staff. Unfortunately, we don't have enough staff across the province from from an enforcement perspective, which makes that difficult at times and and appreciate that's concerning. You know, but certainly we will do our part, you know, because we have to provide on behalf of the community facilitated leadership. You know, enforcement done if people aren't complying with their obligations. There was some other questions around where's forms and things of that nature. Think what we have to remember is what the mayor noted is this is, this is still a contested hearing. Or, you know, we will still be in an O L T hearing, so some things won't materialize until after the process is completed. You know, and then it's our job to make sure those things do happen. So that's all I would say at this point, just to emphasize some of the points the mayor made. I again, I do appreciate that any development application where, you know, people are concerned about it being in their backyard and the impacts. I mean, you know, we see it with plans of subdivision at times where people don't want apartments, you know, in close proximity or group homes in their neighborhood and things of that nature. But at the end of the day, when council makes decisions, whether it's a gravel pit, a group home, plan a subdivision with with a major, you know, apartment dwelling complex, they always at the end of the day have to make a decision based on the technical and legal merits of the application. That's what differentiates councils' decision making in these matters compared to, say, engineering staff coming to you and saying, we have a particular plan of subdivision, we're going to do some reconstruction work, we'd like to put two sidewalks on both sides of the road because right now there's only one. I've seen where council has decided, no, we don't feel that that's necessary. Well, that's within council purview to decide, hey, that that's not the case. Planning is just that much different because of the realities of the Planning Act and the Ontario Land Tribunal. So I think I've said enough, but I think these opportunities are growth opportunities to try and provide some education and awareness about the difference differences under planning legislation and 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 provide some education and awareness about the difference, differences under planning legislation and, and how things are applied.
Thank you, C E O Brennaman. Um, Mayor Shans.
Yeah, sorry, if I could just add, uh, one more thing in, in terms of, uh, transparency and the desire of this council to be transparent. We, uh, we did meet enclosed, uh, as we needed to for the legal part of this. Um, but our intent and, and what, what has happened is to bring the minutes of settlement to the community as soon as possible. Um, in a normal course of events, uh, that would just stay sort of enclosed until the time of the, the land tribunal hearing. So, um, that was, that was our decision to do and we were able to do that, but that, that was our, uh, that, that's why you're seeing it now, because we wanted to be transparent and, and let everyone know what had transpired.
Thanks, Mayor Shans. Counselor Shwin.
Thanks, Chair Kado. Um, first off, thanks, Mayor Shans, for providing a good outline of the process that's happened from the original council hearings last year and through to our sessions this winter, um, to reach the outcome. Not saying it's great outcome, but it's the best we could do in this situation. And as Mr. Shans just said, we tried to be tan, as transparent as possible. Um, and decided building as many safeguards in as possible gave us best chance of success versus a hearing. Um, question before I have one more comment, if that's okay, Chair. Um, there were questions from delegation about the hydrogeological report and some of the planning process. Is that something that we can, um, provide a technical briefing or share with the community at some point? What's appropriate?
Uh, through you, Chair Kado, to, uh, Counselor Schwent's question, the rest of council. Uh, I, I was only able to talk briefly, uh, with our, our lawyer today on, on this matter. He'd like an opportunity because the matter is still before the O L T, how best to release that information? And so, um, he'd like an opportunity to meet with council in closed session about the release and how that, uh, would best be handled. So we'll schedule that, um, in the not too distant future.
Thank you. Um, Councilor Shwin.
Sorry if I can follow up on that. I think that would be helpful and appropriate in this situation because we're trying to support our community. Um, and this statement's way too soon, but at some point in this council's term, I believe we need to have a discussion about how wallets can position itself talking to the province on planning issues. I know we've passed, a previous council passed a motion in the past saying we don't want gravel pits, but blanket motions like that take up council time, and I don't think are overly effective. How can we talk to our local M P P, our government, and say, current process isn't working? Um, we've gone too far taking the powers away from the local community and put it in the hands of the law tribunal and the province. And we need to find a happier medium. I know it can't be done in time for this situation, but going forward, we can be proactive and have a better voice, I believe.
Thank you, Counselor Shwin. Mayor Shans.
Um, I was just looking for an email to, to actually quote from, but I, I can't find it, but, um, Mayor Solonan from Wilmot is, I think she's vice chair now of Tapmo, which is. Thank you. And I know that she has, she has already begun to, uh, to petition the government and also Mayor Foxton of North Dumfries was chair of that committee for a while and, and, um, so, so there has been local advocacy at, at high levels, um, to the government and, and certainly we can talk about that and continue that and find out how we can support those. Yeah.
Barring any further discussion, there is a recommendation that council, uh, receive the report A zero four dash twenty twenty-three. Capital paving, the Ontario Land Tribunal Appeal Minutes of Settlement is information. Can I get a mover on that? Do we do that? Sorry, we're gonna redo that. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion is carried. All right, there is no unfinished business. There is some consent items before we pass a motion approving and receiving the consent agenda. As a whole, um, does anyone on council wish to remove any items for further discussion? Seeing none. So the recommendation is that the following consent items be received for information. Item ten point two point one, notice of committee of adjustment hearing, March twentieth, twenty twenty-three. Item ten point two point two, notice of public meeting, March twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. Ten point two point three, notice of public meeting, March twenty-one, twenty twenty-three, and ten point two point four, the Bell Public Notification Proposed Telecommunications Facility two twenty-one, Glaslow Street, South. Oh, right. So can I get a mover in a second or for that? Counselor Bryant, seconded by Counselor Burgess, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion is carried. Uh, so that brings us to staff reports and memos. There are a number of these. Um, so the first one, twelve point one, we have Jeremy Vink, manager of planning, to provide an overview of this report. Jeremy.
Thank you, members of council. So this is for the zone change for the property, O P A, official plan amendment is zone change for a property at thirty-nine Arthur Street for the land holdings known as thirty-nine A Holdings Limited. Uh, the property is a four point seven hectare portion of land, uh, fronting onto Arthur Street, a small portion of fronting onto High Street. As you may be aware, the, it abuts the Kissing Bridge Trail on the north side, as long as the industrial lands on the north side. Arthur Street on the west, northwest side, and then on the south side is the Bullander Park lands. And then towards the east is the, uh, High Street, Tor Street residential neighborhood. Uh, so that's generally the location of the site. Approximately one point six hectares of the property along Arthur Street is designated industrial and the township's official plan and zoned industrial, uh, with floodplain prevent regulations. The balance of the land is about three point one hectares that is designated open space in the town, township's official plan and zoned, oh, oh, open space, oh, one. The applicant has proposed that to amend the official plan to re-designate approximately one point nine five hectares to the property to align the lands that are currently in use, uh, on the property that are currently being used for industrial purposes, as well as to expand the area to allow for some industrial, uh, parking, trailer parking and storage to the rear of the site uh, towards the High Street area along just south of the trail area. Uh, they're also proposing a zoning amendment to kind of reflect that, to rezone that portion of lands to M one, which is consistent with the front portion of lands to expand the site-specific zoning to the east to allow that gravel parking area for the truck and trailer parking, to remove the site-specific zoning that's on the current portion of the lands for the auto recycling yard, that prints an auto recycling yard. And then to make sure they'll open space zone aligns with their delineate natural features and buffers that are being proposed. Um, bit of history on this property, um, just for the context here. Um, back in the nineteen forties, a small portion of the site was designated industrial by the nineteen seventies. A larger portion of the site was being, uh, was almost all designated industrial. Then in nineteen eighty-three, when the official plan came in, a portion of this land, the northwest corner was industrial and the rest went into an open space designation. Staff can find no rationale as to why that was done. We can't find any information in the reports. Other than it may be because of the landfill that was on that portion where they assumed where the landfill was and we're trying to protect that. So there is no impacts to the landfill that took place. From what we understand, the landfill took place in around the nineteen sixties, from about nineteen sixty-two to nineteen sixty-nine, and is a big portion of the site. That was utilized as well as in the back part that's proposed to be re-d, rezoned for the gravel parking trip, gravel parking. As well, there is a portion of the current site that's under use that is being, that was part of the old landfill too. So just to returns and, and regards to the planning policies, the provincial policy statement and the place to grow govern this development also. So there's tho, those policies speak to promoting efficient development of land use within our, within our service to settlement areas. Utilizing our existing services where we can, being a very practical about utilizing lands within our settlements where appropriate and efficient to do so. Promoting the economic development opportunities where possible, also making sure we address compatibility issues, as well as ensuring that we protect our natural areas. So in broad terms, that's what's those policies speak to in both the provincial policy and the place to grow. The regional official plan also speaks to a number of these elements. Um, the regional official plan, the region reviewed the application as submitted along with the various reports that were provided, one of them, which was the D four study, as it's called, and that's regarded to the landfill. And the region accepted that report with no concerns. Um, just to returns to compatibility, that which is called the D six guidelines sometimes, which is noise, dust and odor. The applicant, the studies were submitted and the region has also reviewed those and they are satisfied that the, uh, there is minimal, uh, impacts, noise can be addressed and dust issues can be addressed and attenuated and there's no significant impacts that would prevent the site from moving forward and developing as proposed subject to addressing those, uh, landscaping and fencing portions, basically that is posed by the applicant. Archaeological resources reviewed, there's no concerns there. With respect to natural hazards, the lands that are around the creek, um, would remain in the open space designation and therefore protected and not be allowed to be developed on. And the floodplain portion has been addressed with the region and the G R C A just acknowledged where the location of the flooding would take place and the proposed, uh, zoning would reflect that with the, with the F suffix on it to identify those lands subject to flooding. With respect to the township's official plan, uh, going back to this, that back portion of lands are designated open space and the front portion is designated industrial. The policies in the official plan say an open space designation either represents an area such as major golf courses, parks, major parks, golf courses, or areas used for public or quasi-public uses or lands present, uh, that present some form of potential hazard where no form of development is deemed appropriate. So that's where we would place an open space designation on a property. The industrial designation is obviously where we delineate for areas such as manufacturing, assembly, processing and storage. So those are the differences where we would accommodate different designations. So we also have a designation for the, around natural hazards and, and that the official plan speaks to is protecting those natural hazard areas where natural hazards are flooding slopes on organic soils. So we would protect those kind of features through, through zoning amendment, uh, zoning process. So in terms of the proposed development in front of us, from the official plan perspective, there are no archaeological concerns. Uh, staff reviewed the functional servicing report that reviewed the stormwater management and how that would be addressed and how grading and drainage could take place and properly be addressed on the site. Um, mainly that the site would drain towards the south, be captured in a bit of a swale before it outlets towards the creek, the, the Canica Jake Creek, uh, which is typical type of stormwater management. Geotechnical work was done to assess the soils and the conditions and what would need to take place to appropriately see some fill take place, the structural fill, and then the grading of the site to achieve what's required, uh, for the parking of trailers. The, uh, I know what the compatibility study was reviewed in terms of, uh, the D six guidelines. Uh, again, this is more of a regional, uh, review because it's under their jurisdiction somewhat, but staff did review it too. Uh, as mentioned, you know, the, there are not much in the way of vibrations or odors, uh, and there is some limited dust and noise. Some dust because of the proposed gravel parking lot and noise because we're talking about a trucking movements during the daytime hours. So trucks moving into the site and hooking up to the trailers and leaving again. So minimal noise and that could all be addressed appropriately to the neighboring residential. And the reports identified that and those reports addressed, addressed all those concerns. With respect to the D four guidelines around the landfill side, um, again, this is actually a regional jurisdiction. However, staff went the extra step in getting it peer reviewed and taking a look at from our perspective to make sure everything was addressed appropriately. To ensure groundwater, uh, surface waters wouldn't be impacted, that that was appropriately being addressed, that the landfill gas with methane was appropriately being looked at and be considered. The monitoring that would need to take place as a result of that to monitor that methane gas was appropriate and how that would take place as well. Just in terms of the proposal, they're proposing that the lot can only be constructed in gravel as per the study. The parking lot is only to be used for parking our trailers and trucks, so there's no buildings or on, or, or any buildings or anything on top of that other than the trailer. So uh, you can't see any granite concrete or buildings to be placed on the property at this time because of the methane issues and just the supports that were needed. And then there was also a proposal that there be quarterly monitoring of the gas probes just to ensure that um, the methane gas is still in check and that is okay. And there's no concerns as it's moving out around the site. So staff has reviewed that and our compatible, our expert reviewed that too, to ensure that they were satisfied with the approach. Uh, this was also went to the Ministry of, uh, Environment and Conservation of Parks for their review and they have also reviewed it. Were satisfied with the D four, uh, study that was presented to them. Just again, on the peer review, uh, we did have them look at everything and they have just recommended some, just some requirements around the landfill and the filling of the site and the regular monitoring that will take place as part of a future site plan agreement to ensure the methane levels are are within acceptable ranges, which they have been and continue to be in and around the old gravel field landfill site. Um, I will note there has been historical issues closer to the existing building that's on the site, but that doesn't appear to have anything to do with the landfill. It appears to be coming more from the future or past uses on the property. Uh, when with the salvage yard recycling, that's appears to be where the concern was more so with the methane that's coming and is closer to the building. However, as noted, a future site plan agreement will come into place that will, for the development of the site. And that will ensure that there's quarterly monitoring being done for at least two years. Those monitoring studies will be submitted and if needed, it will be required that they continue monitoring if the levels are seen to be uh, too high and need to be addressed or continue to be reviewed. Uh, with respect to the proposed change from an open space to industrial designation, I want to touch base back on that again, just to state. There's nothing under the current planning policies that would state that these lands and the back portion of landfill that need to be protected for any reason. Nothing saying they can't be developed for this type of use for the parking of stra, trailers and trucks. And as such, the open space designation is probably not the most appropriate zone designation. The industrial designation is then the more appropriate for those lands to be converted and utilized more efficiently for uh, an industrial purpose within our settlement boundaries and seeing those lands that are already been compromised in the past to be better utilized. The remaining lands, the portion that will remain in open space will be protected along the creek as well as a portion along the western, uh, easterly side towards High Street where we're protecting a water main that will be kept. So those lands will remain in an open space designation and the stretch right along Bullander Park where the what stormwater facility and trees are at moment will be protected also as an open space zone. So no development would take place in those. Um, just lastly, in regards to the trees, there are a fair amount of trees on the site. And those trees have been analyzed and reviewed. Majority of the trees are in fair to poor shape. And a lot of them are poor quality tree species because they were not planted. They've just kind of grown over time. Uh, essentially the township requires in our guidelines, uh, one-to-one replacement. So every tree that they take down, they'll give us a replacement tree. So that would be what's proposed in this case is that they'll take whatever trees they take down, they're going to propose around the outer rim of the property to add the land, enhance the landscaping around the outer fringe, just to soften the appearance and also help address compatibility and just reduce the look the of the site from the distance, from the, either where the kissing bridge trail or the park, et cetera, to enhance those features, just what's there today. Uh, this will be provided for in the site plan agreement also. Uh, part of the zoning is to remove those automotive salvage yard permissions that are on the site specific in the front. So that'll be a bonus. It'll be great to see that removed. We don't oversee those lands which are in the floodplain revert back to a recycling yard. So therefore we would never see a recycling yard back in our floodplain, which is, uh, something staff would like to see and would recommend take place. Staff also reviewed the traffic proposed. There is minimal traffic, you know, it's basically a site to park trailers and the trucks will come in, hook up and take a few trailers out and replace a few trailers here and there during the day. We're talking about eight to, you know, eight, eight to fifteen trucks maybe per day, one per hour. Um, so it's not a significant amount of traffic that's happening on the site. And there's no real concerns. There's no impact to the roads. The region has no concerns from a traffic, compact, traffic perspective because it's entering onto the regional road. So there's, the roads can handle that amount of traffic and as noted, it's minimal. So as such, staff is satisfied that the provincial policy statement, the place to grow and the regional official plan of the met and that's proposed official plan amendment is consistent with the township's official plan and as such, the official plan amendment is appropriate. With respect to the zoning, the zoning will implement the official plan, uh, will adjust the zoning and the portion of land to be rezoned for the trailer parking to allow that to take place. So it's rezoned to M one, consistent with the front portion of the property. It will be a site-specific, uh, zone that will still remain in place, only allowing the parking of the trailers as well as Trailers as well as requiring that the parking be gravel parking only consistent with the study that was completed. And as noted, the site specific zoning will be amended to remove the salvage yard portion, auto recycling portion across the front edge of the property. The floodplain regulations will remain in place and as identified by the G R C A, that line has been, will be modified appropriately in the zoning to show the exact limits of the flooding. And designate those lands appropriately. The remainder of the lands will remain in the open space zone and protected from development. One other element here we want to touch on is land acquisition. So as I noted, there is two land portions that. Are going to remain in the open space designation, specifically the southern portion across the site near Bullander Park and then. The other portion towards the east along High Street, there's going to be a buffer strip in there. So that buffer strip between High Street and this, and the development is going to remain an open space zone and open space designation. It has the township's water main heading to the north, which is currently in an easement. The applicant is proposing to convey these lands to the township. So we had ownership of those lands and we would be responsible for those lands and own our water main. It would also give us an opportunity for the, to connect Bullander Park to the kissing bridge trail with a future trail connection, which is unformally existing there today, but would give us the opportunity to formalize a proper trail connection. Also consistent with our core area, our core review design that was done just last year. There was a proposal to run a creek trail. Around the downtown area where possible, and it proposed a connection from Arthur Street to Bullander Park. Staff approached the landowner and to determine if there'd be opportunity for that to take place. And in this case, we have worked out that they would convey the lands along the Canica Jake Creek to the township. Therefore, expanding Bullwinder Park and giving us more land. And give us an opportunity to provide that trail connection somewhere along the Canica Jake Creek, which would give us access from Arthur Street to Bullwinder Park also. So that implements a few other elements there that would be beneficial for the staff and township to see take place consistent with previous studies. So. As noted, the region, the G R C A have, issues have been addressed as well as other development departments, their concerns have been addressed. Staff went through a number of comments, there was a number of community comments that provided early on in the process and staff just reviewed them in the report in terms of compatibility, noise. Air degradation, dust, lighting. Fencing, trees and shrubs, et cetera. So we've addressed all those comments in the report. A lot of those will come forward in the site plan and the future site plan agreement. Which will speak to protecting those trees that remain on the property fencing. And just how this will all take place in terms of some lighting too, is to protect the neighboring property owners and enforce some of those requirements. Sorry, I went on a little long tonight, but it is a bit more complex site. It's better for stat council to be aware of it because you were not aware of the initial process. So you have the recommendation in front of you tonight to approve the official plan amendment as proposed in the zoning. And in front of you, so staff is here to answer any questions. I know the applicant is also here before you tonight. To go through their presentation to give you some of the visuals and hopefully answer any questions from council.
Thank you, Mr. Vink. And thank you for making my job easy by explaining that we have other people here and offering to take on any questions. So I'll pose it to you, council. Do you have any questions for Mr. Vink? Counselor Bridges.
All right, through you, Chair Kado is working, I assume. To Mr. Vink. You mentioned for the trees, we're doing a one-to-one replacement ratio. In the report, it said there's about six hundred and sixty-two trees inventoried, which I assume just some will be replaced. Is there going to be any ongoing monitoring? Because I'm assuming we're switching from mature trees, they're digging up to putting in little seedlings.
Yes, through, through you, Chair Kado to Counselor Burgess. So in the site plan agreement, there will be requirements that. Whatever trees are to be remain and preserved, including the bitter nut tree. And any new trees to be planted on that one-to-one ratio, they're able to be responsible for them in perpetuity on their property to protect and maintain them. And replace them in the future if they die. Okay. So if it does come across our desk for some reason, now staff don't go and monitor and drive by the sites. But if for some reason concerns were raised or there's land transfer, we often are required to review the site for the purchaser. And advise them if the site isn't compliant with the site plan and we would check that roughly the amount of trees are there and, and that location as being maintained. It, they will be, in this case, obviously you're going to get some mature trees or some dead trees that are, there are a number of dead trees on the site. We are, like I mentioned, getting some better, more hardy trees, more native trees proposed in this time. With the one-to-one replacement, now they're not going to be as large, obviously, but they will not be saplings. They're going to be, are kind of typical to like what you would see as a street tree scenario, maybe about that size. When they're first planted. So then they will grow slowly over time and fill in. So the experts will. With the site plan will lay them out that they will be able to grow and fill in and take into place. I, I will acknowledge that portion of the tree planting proposed will take place on lands. That they own today, but will be conveyed to the township along the Canica jig, which. In some respects, then we take over the ownership and maintenance of those, but the bonus is, is that we will fill in that strip there and be able to fill in along the Canica jig and provide some shade to the water and just. Even just improve things there and filling up that location with some better tree planting. So just something to note that way. I hope they answered your question, but there's about three hundred trees to be replaced.
Follow up, Counselor Bridges.
Thank you. Thanks on that. Just a couple more questions, if I may. One of the complaints from residents and you did address it in the report is dust. And the report said it is unlikely, but it is right next to a park with a lot of kids. Is there any way to stipulate asphalt or some other substance instead of gravel to avoid that issue?
Again, through you, Counsel, Chair Kado to Counselor Burgess. Unfortunately, no. The requirement under the D four study and the analysis says that you have to maintain it in gravel. Because of the landfill that's there and we have to be able to let the methane kind of filter through, even though the gravel is going to create a bit of a. Bit of a membrane and it's going to push some of the methane to the fringes, they need to allow that space for it to go through. Anything. More solid in terms of asphalt or concrete would inhibit that and is not something they could recommend. So it does have to remain in gravel. So as part of site plan agreements, any gravelled property, they, we do require them to regularly maintain the gravel to make sure they keep dust down. And they would use some sort of dust suppressant to reduce any gravel, any dust from the site. Realizing we're only talking a few trucks per day and generally speaking, they won't be going very fast. We shouldn't see a significant amount of dust in the trees in between should filter any dust towards neighboring properties, including the park.
It suggests the actual movements might be higher. Did you get any of that?
Through each council to the chair, I did not catch any of that. There was no sound almost to the very end. So I'm sorry.
Sorry about that. All right, through you, Chair Kado to Mr. Vink. The traffic report here says there's going to be about a hundred and fifteen parking spaces. But yet they're only projecting one truck per hour. It seems a little unrealistic to me and even its report here, it says township planning staff questioned the number of trips provided. And suggests the actual movements for the site would be higher. I'm just wondering if we should get a traffic study done or if, like where is this justification, given that. Our downtown is already congested and now we're putting this spaces in for all of these trucks to go down and we don't have a bypass yet.
Through you, Chair Kado to Counselor Burgess. So, yeah, a hundred and fifteen parking spaces. So although we think it might be slightly higher, the potential slightly higher, we're not talking a significant, we're not expecting a significant difference. Most of these sites with trailer storage. Are literally trailers parked there for a fair period of time and they moved in and out over time and they're not being moved every day. So. You do only have a few trucks coming and going every day as each of those trailers moves through. So it's, even though there's a hundred and fifteen trailers parked there, there are a lot of times they're just sitting there in some of these yards. If you even look at a home hardware in St. Jacobs, for example, their trailer yard, a lot of those trailers just sit there for a long periods of time and they move them as needed and when needed. So. Even if the truck numbers were slightly higher of two trucks per hour. It's not even that significant in terms of a regional road and the amount of traffic that would take place. A traffic study is not going to change that. It's not going to identify any changes because. From a regional road perspective, the region's road can handle that and is able to, is meant to carry trucks. And is meant to move trucks in and around. So unfortunately, the reality is, is. Yes, there might be more trucks going for the downtown somewhat, but if we also recognize on the past use of the property. As a recycling salvage yard, there was cars coming and going significantly to the site too. So there's probably a give and take of how many vehicles that were. Losing and how many we gain. So I'm not sure there's a substantial amount of change taking place.
Is, is there any thing? If they were to all of a sudden be using it all a hundred and fifteen per day, is there anything in our approval that would limit that? Just thinking home hardware. The example you use, like that's more cross docking where they're storing stuff, but I'm assuming here. There will not be that much loading and unloading per se, given there's going to be no buildings on site.
So through, through the chair to the Council Burgess. So yeah, it's not a cross docking situation, it's just a storage situation in this case. Can we limit, we could maybe put some requirements into the site plan agreement and see how that proceeds. Just to make a, to review and determine if there's any impacts, if they are changing or is there substantially more. But we could try it through a site plan agreement, but I'm not sure I could, how well I could enforce that, to be honest.
Any other questions? Mayor Shants, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Through you to Mr. Vink. So with the zoning that we're putting on this property or the back part of this property now. Is there any other activity that could be the, and I understand that the current owner is parking trailers there, but with the zoning, is there any other activity that. Say a future owner might do in there or is it restricted? Only to the parking trailers, just to be clear.
Through you, Chair Kado to Mayor Shants, good question. So the front portion of the property will remain in an M one zone with full privileges, save and except removing the auto recycling. So that, so that won't change. They'll have flexibility in the front portion of the property to do a lot of things industrial. Okay. Won't necessarily get them more buildings because of the floodplain restrictions, but they would be permitted a wide variety of industrial uses. The back portion we're rezoning is only going to be permitted to parking of storage of trailers. And that's going to be specific, that's specific in the site specific zoning. So that's all that's permitted. So we won't see any buildings, any structures. Any other type of operation running back there that would cause so many different type of noise or traffic. So it'll be limited to what's proposed.
Okay, thank you. And if I could just make a comment and then I have another, another question about trees, but the comment is about. Talking about regional roads are meant to carry trucks and technically, yes, they are meant to carry trucks, but downtown cores. That are trying to be, create pedestrian friendly spaces. Are not conducive to trucks. So I, I'm just going to put that out there because we need to do that every opportunity that we can. My second question is regarding trees and I, I, I think we have a, maybe a unique opportunity here to, to clean up. Some, some dead trees and I know the nature reserve removed a lot of invasive species so that they can replace them with, with natural trees and you spoke to that. And, and I probably should have waited for the delegates presentation first, but I saw a picture in the package of the tree. The tree line as it exists and as it will exist, but it said in ten to fifteen years. So I just, and you talked about the size of the trees that are being planted. Is, is there consideration given in that? In, in that planting, I guess, to make sure that there's a visual screen for the park and for the house that abuts the trail.
So through you, Counselor, Chair Kado to Mayor again. So, yeah, the, the presentation will give a bit of a simulation of what it might look like and some changes that will take place. So they will give you a bit of a visual picture. So the proposal is, is that with that one-to-one replacement, that we're trying to get the majority of the trees on the property. And as part of that site plan process, we'd be looking to infill and to. Enhance any tree line that's there to, to create that a visual buffer between, let's say, the park and any neighboring properties. So that's staff's first and foremost priority is to enhance what's there today with those trees that are being replaced and removed. And then if they can't, and if we're, we don't want to over enhance, we don't want to put too many trees in that we don't, they can't grow. So. We have to also caution that some, at some point, some of the trees, just, you know, we're talking three hundred trees. Some might go elsewhere on the property, other than just the outer fringe on the Bullwinder Park side or High Street side. So we get more along the trail, for example. We've been looking to see that enhanced too with some of the tree planting. So. That's what our first and foremost plan is. And then if they can't accommodate all the trees, then we'll be looking to fill in a bit more along the Canica Jake Creek on both sides there too. So. Where the existing, towards the existing side of the salvage auto recycling side would be. Just want to make one highlight, under the current conditions right now, nothing. In the site plan agreement or on the current site allows us to protect the trees because they're not under the, on our current site plan. So right now, those trees on the property aren't really protected other than going through this planning process. So. The planning process is actually going to give us the opportunity to ensure the one-to-one replacement and ensure that enhancement. And to see that quality improvement and see those better trees be placed on the site.
Okay, thank you. I just, I wanted. Is it dead again?
No, you're good.
Okay. I, I just wanted to ensure that the visual screen remains intact for the enjoyment of the park. Ten or fifteen years is a long time.
Then back to you, Madam Chair, just definitely, there's, they're only removing the dead trees and some other trees in there that are in good quality. So a lot of the trees will remain, you're actually going to, they're going to, and then the enhance with some new trees that will start to fill in. So. It will fill it back in where they had to remove the dead trees. So you actually see an enhancement along the park side in the future. It will actually look much better and actually look better than the dead trees there today.
Seeing no other questions, then we do have Hugh Handy here with G S P Group to provide an overview of the changes. So Hugh, you'll have seven minutes when you're ready to go.
Thank you, Chair Kado. Mayor Shants, members of council, staff, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Hugh Handy and I am a land use planner and vice president at G S P Group. I'm here on behalf of our client, thirty-nine A Holdings Limited. Our client, Rob Shapiro, is attending virtually this evening as well as Mr. Shapiro's solicitor, Tom Holinsky from Erd and Barrelless. I also have with me this evening in the audience, and I'll bring up a presentation or if I can get the presentation shortly. Amanda Stellings is behind me. She's a planner at G S P Group and working with me on the project. Jim Walls, senior geoscientist with R J Burnside. And Nathan Miller, senior terrestrial and wetland biologist with Natural Resource Solutions, Inc., N R S I. As mentioned, I have a brief presentation this evening and really, obviously Jeremy has gone into great detail and I thank Jeremy for. Doing part of my presentation, but really I'd like to give the, more of a graphic presentation of actually what we would hope to see through the process. Of developing the property. And what we believe is really important this evening or what I'd like to come across is there are important aspects of these planning application. That really marry private and public interest as part of the development of this property. So if I can get the first slide. This is in an employment area as Mr. Vink had indicated, really it's at the north end of the settlement area, but bringing. the settlement area, but bringing into sort of the the areas that are the site is in red and then the broader area on Myra Pets products further to the north. But this is also an area that is proposed on the site to the green area on the right hand side of the outline in red is where the, and I'll go through this in a second. But where we would see the parking area. And this gives you an idea, obviously, where Bolander Park and in subsequent slides, you'll be able to show that as well. Next slide. The proposed development then is in the darker gray, the expansion area. And as mentioned, this expansion area in total will accommodate about one hundred and fifteen trailers on the property. And about fifty fifty five would be shown in that darker gray expansion area. I'll get into as we kind of cycle through the next few slides, the areas that would change as part of this. The next slide. This gives you an idea of the approximate footprint of the former landfill site in purple on the area. So that gives you an idea of where this current area is somewhat treated and has grown up over time. Nathan can provide if there are questions of council, some more details on on exactly the number. Thank you. The next slide shows then the existing building and gravel parking area, the building at the at the front right now. And I think as as many of council and staff will agree, some of the cleanup to the building and the fencing along the front has been a big change on the site and controlled access to the parking lot is there currently. Next slide. Then the expanded areas then again highlighted for the commercial vehicle storage on the back. Next slide. The really what I was talking earlier about the public benefit and public interest of the application. We have had ongoing discussions, as Mr. Vink had said. Early on in the process, we talked about the the link for the water main to the Kissing Bridge Trail and the importance of that to the township. Through further discussions, the area next to Bolander Park and and listening to some of the comments at the time of the public meeting as well, the owner, Mr. Shapiro, also indicated that he would be willing to convey those lands as well. So you can start to see on those two areas. That's about, I believe, about almost two two acres of land will be part and become part of the township's ownership. Next slide. This then gives you an idea of the the tree cover currently on the site. And I think it's important as we sort of look at this from a visual that there will still be a lot of trees between what is there currently and and the parking area. And as as I've probably noted, or I should note, the trees that are growing on the on the cap of the landfill really shouldn't be there. And this is where I brought Jim, in case you want to dig into the details of that. But the idea is that the landfill should be able, the trees shouldn't be growing into the landfill cap. That it there should be a cap on it. So the importance of removal of those is important to ensuring the safe aging of the landfill as well. This slide also shows the informal trail that has gone on to connect in the really what I would call in in trail planning, that sort of desire line or desire of the public to connect between the park and the Kissing Bridge Trail. And the importance of that trail within this community and the broader community. Next slide. This then is what Mayor Schatz was talking about in the in the package. What we tried to do is give an idea of if we're standing in the park currently and looking north towards the property. What would that be over time? And of course, the tree cow or the the types of trees, I think it's important to note that these will be native trees that will try to ensure that there are a variety of trees. Because a good example is the ash trees that are in behind that unfortunately have died as as part of the disease. And that those trees in the slide to your right would be taken down as hazard trees. And then over time, and again, this would be where I'd lead, I'll lean on Nathan if there's a question. But these trees would be planted and then obviously grow up and fill in over time. You can see sort of the lighter, we tried to image this with the lighter leaves so that you could get an idea of what's there now. And that what would be there as these trees continue to mature over time. But I think the importance of of it is is kind of twofold. Obviously, one to screen the the use that we propose. And as noted, there is quite a bit of trees that will remain so that I don't think that there will be an immediate change in in the view from the park. But this will be a way of enhancing the aspects of of Bolander Park, which import to the local community. I I believe that's probably my minute. Okay. There's been obviously a lot of eyes on this app on these applications, both from a review of your staff, peer review. We look at the next process provided there is support for this, the site plan approval process, which will start to put the the aspects of this application into play and have everyone work from the same page. In conclusion, there is a positive staff report before you this evening. We would look for your support of the application, which we believe is important and appropriate employment use and balances those other thing of protecting natural heritage and your park system. Thank you, and our team would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Handy. Are there any questions from council? Council Brian?
Thank you. Through you to the delegate. You mentioned about the trees shouldn't be planted there. Why not? I'm curious.
I think I'll if with your indulgence, I'll ask up to.
Evening. My name is Jim Walls. I'm Vice President, Environment, RJ Burnside and Associates. I'm a geoscientist. I work a lot with landfills and contaminated sites. So in this case, the landfill was covered with a cap, which is about a half a meter thick layer of of clay material to protect the underlying waste as it decays from surface uses and the trees, if they get too big, the roots start going down, entering the cap and start displacing the cap. And then the tree roots actually get into the waste. Trees don't grow very well in waste, so even even parks that you've seen that were former landfills, there'd be hills in some parks, you don't see very many trees on them. They're great for tobogganing because there's no trees. So that's why the ministry has asked me to make sure that the cap is protected and that would be controlling and reducing the trees.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none. Thank you very much for your your presentation, Mr. Handy, and for those of you that joined us to to answer any questions. So if there's no further questions for the consultant. I do want to note that there was correspondence received at the clerk's office regarding this file. A petition was received and has been included in the agenda package for your information. So is there any further discussion on this matter? There is a recommendation on the table. You're all aware of the recommendation. Don't have to read it for you, I suppose. Any movers? We have a mover, a secondar. Mayor Schatz. All those in favor of the recommendation? All those opposed? That motion is defeated. All right, so that moves us on to the next one, right? Sorry, yes, Mayor Schatz.
Yeah. Can I just ask a question of staff? I guess, where does that leave us in the process?
Mr. Vink, Director Fries.
Through you, Madam Chair, through the Mr. Chair to the Mayor Schatz. Obviously, by denying the rec or not proving the recommendation, it's in limbo. So either we council has to move forward with some sort of direction, or it means there is no decision. And the applicant then would have to essentially appeal the decision that you'd made no decision on this basically, or no supporting decision one way or the other. So I guess there'd be some direction we'd seek from councils, how to move forward. Either you approve the application or deny it completely, or give some direction about what you would like to see move forward, but yeah, right now, it kind of leaves us a little bit in limbo because you just denied a one motion, so.
CAO Brenneman.
Yeah, and and just to emphasize what Jeremy indicated. Council could, you know, provide additional direction to staff in terms of what would need to need to be seen, especially perhaps by the people that voted against to perhaps be in favor of the application if there was any additional information or any changes and that sort of thing. So again, this is a learning opportunity for a new council in terms of you can't, as Mr. Vink noted, you can't be out there and planning limbo. It has to either be an approval or a denial, or it could be. You know. This could come back at a later date, subject to some additional information.
So I suppose the question for council is, is there anything specifically that you're looking for in terms of additional information that we could put forth to staff to come back with in terms of a report? Is there a motion that we can put forth to deny this application? I guess that would be the other option that's available. Sorry, Counselor Brian.
Thank you. I noticed there's the petition here with fifteen hundred names on it. Has any of that been taken into consideration? Have have we had any feedback from this petition group as to why they're basically opposing it? I know I've seen the petition, but we we've had no presentation or anything from them. And I'm just I'm more curious as to why everybody's fighting this. And I'd like more information, to be honest.
Sorry, Counselor Grant.
I would through you, councillor Kado, to the rest of council, I would concur with councillor Bryant. We received this petition and I would like to maybe hear from those residents. Specifically, I I know that Jeremy listed some of the the concerns they may have, but I think it would be more a fulsome discussion if we can have their opinions presented to us. I would also like to see more about how we're going to address the traffic issue, especially within the downtown core. Mayor Schatz brought up a very good point that while regional roads are built for heavy trucks. The downtown core is a totally different nature, and I would like to see maybe some more consideration put into how we can best address the level of traffic in that core.
Thank you, Counselor Grant. Counselor Schwint, I saw your hand.
Couple comments I'd like to make. First of all, regarding the petition, I reviewed it as well. And I was amazed at how many out of all township names were on that as a percentage of the list. So I'm struggling with that petition a little bit, understanding the rationale from the residents, would like to hear that. And as well as accounts, so I'm a little bit concerned if we don't provide better rationale for our decisions. Either way, we put ourselves on limbo similar to the gravel pit issue. So I think no matter what action we take tonight, we need more information. We also have to provide good rational points as to why we made that decision at a future date.
Counselor Bridges.
Just touched on some of the questions I had and Mayor Schatz brought it up a bit too, of future uses of the property. For the studies, you can correct me if I'm wrong here, Mr. Vink, but I'd like to see studies based on highest use of the property, not just on an estimate of one out of the one hundred and fifteen spots with the current users of two companies renting it. I would assume they already have close to eight trucks per day going on that one truck per hour estimate. So I'd want to see our studies, whether that be traffic or noise or dust, based on the most as possible, based on the number of spots or other uses of the property.
I think if I can add a point to that, I mean, traffic studies are great if we're trying to measure the level of traffic, et cetera. But if we're trying to measure the impact to the quality of life on residents, I think that we need a different metric. And maybe a traffic study isn't the most desirable one, maybe. You know, maybe there are other options as well in addition to or, you know, instead of a traffic study. CAO Brenneman.
Yeah, through you, Chair Kado. Just want to speak to the fact that councillor Schwint, you know, made some important observations considering what we just actually dealt with earlier in the evening with respect to the Sean Station gravel pit application for for capital paving. I just want to emphasize that this again is a unique example of where if in the future council does turn down this application because planning staff supported the application, you would have to go and seek and hopefully try to obtain a planning consultant that would agree with your decision as well. I'm not saying that that wouldn't be possible. It may be possible. Sometimes it it's it's difficult depending on what.
Mayor Schatz.
Thank you. Could I ask staff if the the people who were were opposed were made aware of the meeting tonight? Because I I think it was fairly widely known that that there's a meeting tonight and the petition was presented and we we have had emails and and different correspondence from the group, so. Kind of surprised there's no one here as well.
Through through the chair to Mayor Schatz, everybody who submitted comments to us at the beginning was notified of the report coming forward and being brought to you. So all those public comments that we, where people signed up, were made aware that this report was coming forward to council. Staff is also surprised there wasn't more people here actually tonight to speak about this report. But as for the petition, the petition was received just before, after staff's report was completed and just before the report was going to the public. I don't know whether the public petition people were notified or not, people that signed up, I don't know. We wouldn't be aware of that because that was done through his Facebook page, but anyone who did speak and asked to be kept informed was notified.
Okay, thank you. I also noted that probably fifty percent or more of the people on the petition were not local residents.
Clerk Smith, I saw your hand up.
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair, just briefly, the petition was created by a resident and delivered by another, and both of both of those residents were made aware of the meeting tonight and the opportunity to delegate.
So so there is there has been, it's been well communicated then that the meeting was happening and they would be able to delegate tonight. So in terms of process. What we do tonight will be ratified at council. So I guess I would ask council if there's information that you want before council meeting next week that you want staff to bring back so that we can discuss it more or 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 make a more definite maybe decision.
One thing I suppose that I would like to know, and I don't know if we could get an answer on this, is what direction would the majority of the new traffic be coming in from? Would it be coming in from the north end or would it be coming in from one of the other directions, which would then bring it through our main downtown core? And I don't know if somebody can provide a response to that tonight, but maybe at some point in the future that might help alleviate some of the concerns with our downtown core and the heavy truck traffic coming through there. Counselor Schwint.
That raises an interesting point in my mind, and whose responsibility is this? We've got industrial part of town, north end of town. Is it the landlord's responsibility to move out to the rural areas to avoid the downtown, which this council has definitely not wanted in the past, or is it us as a I'm gonna say a reach him because I'm gonna pass the buck. Also, I'm gonna say a reach him because I'm gonna pass the buck responsibility to have proper infrastructure, i.e. a Meyer bypass to better suit. The growing community, and maybe there needs to be more pressure to bring that forward faster, and this to me is a prime example as to why. And that's my comment. My question to staff is, I've never been through or seen a denial of an application motion, so I'm curious what. What's needed for that, what the ramifications are as opposed to just not taking action? This is a new one for me as a councillor.
C A O Dave Mann, Brenneman, sorry, I'm gonna throw this one to you.
Yeah, I may ask Jeremy for your help, but. You know, I I think in fairness from my observation. It seems like, you know, some of the council members that voted against the motion. Have requested some additional information to be able to make a more informed decision, so. Mr. Vink, would a deferral also be? Wise in this circumstance if council doesn't want to. Make a decision on the application tonight, other or to approve or deny that they could defer for a specified time period to allow staff and. The applicant to come back with the additional information.
Through you, through the chair to council, just in regards to C A O Brenneman's comments. Definitely council could defer and give us the direction provided tonight to review traffic issues. It seems to be the biggest item that's up for question. And to come back to council at a future date with. An updated report, you won't necessarily have to put a timeline on it at this point, but you could just direct staff to come back with further information. For a review and consideration in regards to this application. And then at that time, council in the future could see that additional information to determine whether you wish to A proceed with a. Recommendation in favor as was presented tonight, or B council could move forward at that time, maybe. With a decision to deny the applications, basically, then deny the O P A and the zone change accordingly, so. Deferring would give time to address these concerns around the traffic questions and maybe give some clarification or comments around that and give us time to. Give you more wholesome information if you're looking for that, if there's something we're missing and maybe help for that. So we would definitely consider that with the applicant to come forward with something.
Director Fries, I see that you came on.
Yeah, sorry, I just wanted to also let council know that although you can defer the application, it is still considered a non-decision. So I'll let Jeremy respond to where we are in the process and the timelines, but the applicant can appeal a non-decision of a deferral as well.
And just in that regards, council, so. Under the current, under planning guidelines on the prevent the planning act. The applicant could appeal at any point of time after a hundred and, I think it's after nine, a hundred and twenty days. After a hundred and twenty days, which we well exceeded at this point because we've been working with them through twenty twenty-two to try to get to this point. A lot of it has been us doing the peer review and getting responses back and trying to resolve issues with them to get to this point, so. They could appeal even at this point tomorrow if they so desired, for example. Under the future requirements of Bill one oh nine. As of July, any application that's made after July of this year, for example. If we went through a hundred and twenty days and we did not make a decision or something like this. It would actually lead to us, we're starting to refund money. So that's not in play at this point in time. There's no refunds taking place. But because we're exceeding the hundred and twenty days. The applicant has every right to appeal at this point if they so desired for an indecision of council within the required timelines of the planning act. I'm, we'd be hoping that the applicant be willing to work with us to take this one last shot on terms of the deferral and move, come back quickly to council to. Address any concerns and come back and see what decision could be made in a short order.
Thank you, Mr. Vink. I saw councillor Brian, you did have your hand up, did it escape you? I'm notorious for that, so.
No, it didn't escape me. I'm just debating whether to ask for the deferral, put that forward or not, if I'm going to. I don't want to put us in a position where we're going to be forced to go to the O L T on something like this, but I do want to have council given an opportunity to. Be sure of what they're voting on and be comfortable with the decision they're making. Can we postpone it for even two weeks, which would give us enough time to, I think, gather some more information? Would that work for planning staff if we did a short deferral?
Through council, through the chair to council, so. Whatever timeline council wants to put on it, that's up to you, you know, like I said, either way, the potential exists, they could appeal. I I'm gonna hope they don't, and I'm gonna assume they may not, because they'd be willing to work with us probably to get to the next step and see where things go after the next decision. Right now, let's put it this way. By refusing the application or not approving it, you basically lean towards a non-decision. Or a denial, so that either way is putting you almost into an appeal regardless of what what's already happened is put us into a position of a potential appeal, so. The deferral at least gives direction to staff and the applicant to understand there's some fruition, some end in sight. And some direction of what to do, so I would recommend that you do give direction, strong direction to staff. And maybe, yeah, definitely set maybe a timeline if you so desire to say come back in a few weeks and see where we can end up with with a decision, hopefully at that time.
I would be willing to put that on the floor that we ask for a deferral at for very short timeframe, but just enough to get the information that people are looking for.
Did you want to move forward with the two week then?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Motion on the floor, we have a seconder, all those. Green to the next year, I suppose.
If we proceed with this deferral, I think should be very clear with staff and the applicant, what information we're looking for, otherwise we're not making good use of the time.
Okay, so it's fair. So we have a deferral three weeks with a request to staff to provide some additional reports, some additional information around one traffic. Were we wanting more information around the trees? I know that there was some discussion on that today. No, so mainly the traffic is is the point of contention is what I'm hearing. Councillor Burgess.
Just sorry, through you, Chair Kudrow. Just the highest use of the property. I don't know if that'll affect how the original studies were done, or if that would change how we look at certain factors. I just want to base it on that because in the future they can use it how they want.
Thank you councillor Grant.
Um, for me, through you councillor, the rest of council, I would like to see maybe a little bit more discussion on the trees, specifically the type of native trees we're planning. On planting and maybe their growth rate, so we have a good idea of what we're looking at throughout the years for a visual screening for the park.
I think that's fair and maybe further to that point. Getting a copy of the policy specifically around the one to one ratio replacement. And I'm just wondering, because I think that it was a very valid point made if we're replacing big, beautiful, mature trees with, you know, smaller saplings is going to take a. Good deal of time for them to grow and mature and to be, you know, something that we can really appreciate, so. There are some concerns with that, and would it be, or would it make more sense to speak in terms of canopy coverage, not necessarily? Number of treats. So I guess that's where my mind goes with it, and that's why I would, you know, ask that we do have a little bit more information around what that looks like. Sorry, councillor Swin.
So since we're new to this, I want to bring up the question, site plan. Requirements versus own change and official plan amendments. At what point are we moving past making a decision based on official plan and into sites? Specific or site plan agreements that staff are responsible for, and should one be allowed to overrule the other? I guess I don't know the answer to that, and I'd look to staff for some comments.
Through the chair to councillor Schwint, good question. When you get into the type of tree species or the landscape and design guidelines, we're getting into that one to one and the tree protection scenarios, that's that is site plan related. Those are site plan issues. That's what you've delegated back down to staff. With terms of the official plan and the zoning, you're talking designations, those are broad designations and safer designation and official plan, that's the designation of industrial or commercial. Residential or commercial, for example, so you're those are the designations councils purview to set what can and can't happen. In terms of zoning, we're dictating land use, so what type of land use can take place on the property within that designation? So if it's an industrial designation. What kind of industrial uses can take place on a property and why? So you'd be talking at the land uses and then setbacks. So that's what zoning generally looks at is the uses and setbacks. And building heights, for example, but when you get into the actual plantings, the actual facades or. Locational parking versus other elements and treat and fencing, that's site plan details. Which are delegated down to staff and are implemented or implementing the zoning. So the zoning is there, we're just implementing the zoning at site plan.
Any questions, comments? Does that give staff enough direction moving forward into the next three weeks? Yeah, excellent. So. We do need to vote on that still. I'm really in the mood for voting tonight, but I guess we'll do it anyways. All those in favor of the motion to defer by three weeks with the expectation that additional information will come, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion is carried. All right, thanks, folks. That brings us to the next staff report, I S O one, two thousand and three. Drinking water systems report, so Jared Poupay, Director of Infrastructure Services, and Bryce McDonald, the Supervisor of Water, Wastewater. Are both here to provide an overview of the next report.
Thank you, Chair Kudrow. And through you to council, we have a report here that's much less contentious. It is required by legislation to report our annual drinking water systems to council as you are. The owner of the water distribution system, water distribution system is highly regulated. And you will see this report prior to March, because we are required to share this reporting. With our neighboring municipalities that we do share water supply and distribution with. So that is why in in the second recommendation. That we are directed to share this report with the region of Waterloo, the city of Kitchener and the city of Waterloo, as we are supplied. By water from Kitchener, Waterloo, and we do share in Heidelberg with Wellesley, which is under the purview of the region of Waterloo. I think the report has a lot of excellent information in it. I think it was very informative. I hope council found it the same way. We did put a lot more effort into it than we have in the past, quite frankly, and that would be. Kudos to our water and wastewater supervisor Bryce McDonald. When I started here ten years ago, we had eight distribution systems, so we're down to four. That is good news. That means we're more efficient and we've condensed our reporting requirements. Partly that is driven by the region of Waterloo and how they expand what is called their integrated urban system, which is their. Transmission system essentially that supplies water to to the municipality. So I think that's a good news story for council to be aware of, is there's been a lot of work done in Woolwich. And we have become more efficient in our waterside. I think it's important also to to notify council that we have adverse water quality incidences. You always get these, they aren't to be construed that the water is unsafe to drink in any way, shape or form. In this year, though, unfortunately, we have historically had it around ten to eleven annually. This year we had an increase. I think I just want to highlight that to council that we're not hiding that, that is a fact. And there's probably a lot of issues with that, and we're just looking to trend that. We're not really, we can't pinpoint any one particular thing that has led to that increase. But I think the important part is that they are total chloroform hits with high chlorine residuals found in them. That means that that there can be no presence of E. coli in in some and such like a situation like that, so. A total, a total chloroform could be any kind of background, could be dust, anything like that, you know, operator error, sampler error, anything like that, so. I think I think we're just watching that, and we have had multiple discussions with the region on that, they're aware of that. Ensuring that samplers are obviously doing doing what they need to do. And we've looked at our sampling stations as well and made some changes there to hope improve that, but I think just to make council aware of that, that as we'll we'll hopefully not see that trend continue, but we're unsure at this time. We identified lead sampling as well as a requirement. The only location we're required to sample lead on is in Almyra. As it is the only system that has some lead, and we have a program in place or a capital program to eliminate that lead. In all of the systems in Almyra, so that's a good news story, hopefully that we can implement as well. And I think with that, I've got Bryce McDonald on 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 here as well to answer any questions, but I think I'll turn it over to council if there's any. Any questions council may have.
Thank you councillor Kudrow, through you to the rest, to Mr. Poupay. I'm just wondering, the report described what total. Chloroform is, but not the combined chlorine. I'm just kind of wondering what's the difference between the two? And maybe why we might see a combined chlorine in a report.
Okay, so and and I'll attempt to answer this, and certainly if I don't, I'm gonna look to Bryce, but. I think we've got two, two systems in place as far as disinfection goes. We have a free chlorine system and we have a combined system, and the combined system essentially is essentially the addition of ammonia. It binds to the chlorine particle to allow it to stay active for a longer time, so. We have free chlorine system in Maryhill now, but generally speaking, we have more combined systems because. The region is responsible for the supply of water and it needs to travel a long way, so. Part of our, what we need to do on a daily basis or weekly basis, depending on the system, I believe, is we need to. Measure those chlorine residuals that are found in the systems at various points that represent that system, and then we are required to report on that. So I think what was interesting metric here is is we identified, I believe it was twenty A W Q I's. But when you look at the three thousand two hundred and seven samples that were taken in the year, it's a very small percentage.
Seeing no other questions or concerns, comments, observations, no. There is a recommendation that council receives the report and direct staff to provide a copy to the region of Waterloo, city of Kitchener and the city of Waterloo. Do we have a mover? Councillor Bryant, seconded by councillor Grant, all those in favor? All those opposed, as the motion is carried, they're gonna have to do it when everybody puts their hand up. No, I'm good there. Okay, now I know. Okay, so that brings us to the next report on the agenda. Jennifer Hornell, Recreation Manager is here to provide an overview of her report.
Thank you. Good evening, members of council. Just as background, in twenty eighteen, Woolwich Council approved the municipal supports to community programs and events policy, which is in your package for information. This policy established parameters regarding the waiving of rental fees, event supports. And the provision of free community programming requests that come into the R C S department annually. There is five thousand dollars allocated annually through the council administration services budget to offset these costs, and that's administered by recreation staff. This fund is also used to offset the provision of four free family swims and three free family skates annually over holiday periods. There is also just to note approximately ten additional public swims and ten public skates that are generously sponsored by local business and organizations annually as well. The total cost of ups offsetting a maximum of these four swims and three skates annually based on twenty twenty-three fees would be approximately fourteen hundred dollars. Staff is just asking that council endorse that we continue the support of the provision of these family events through the current term of council. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Jennifer. Any discussion, council? Seeing none, there is a recommendation that council approves. You see the recommendation in front of you. Can I get a mover? Councillor Burgess, seconded by councillor Grant, all those in favor? That motion is passed. Thank you. All right, so we also have a memo regarding the St. Jacobs Off Leash Dog Park Edition. And Thomas Vanderhoff, the Acting Director of Recreation and Community Services is here to provide an overview of this memo.
Good evening, council. Through you, Chair Kudrow to council, so the memo that staff have before you this evening is for information purposes. However, we are happy to take any feedback that council may have as well, too, so feel free to share that afterwards. So the memos regarding in addition to the existing off-leash dog park in St. Jacobs to be funded by community donors. The existing dog park was established in two thousand and sixteen and does not contain a fenced in area, rather it's just a trail through open space. The township was approached by a business owner from the village with hopes of fundraising to have a fenced in area constructed. Staff provided an appropriate budget which includes grading, seating, fencing, seating at a cost of approximately thirty thousand dollars. And as a standard practice with our community funded projects, once the funding goals achieved, staff would enter into an agreement with the group to carry out the. Um, and as is standard practice with our community funded projects, once the funding goals achieved, staff would enter into an agreement with the group to carry out the project as the lead, follow our procurement policy, that sort of thing spells out some of those details. Uh, based on the distance of the site to the nearest residence, uh, considering our, our current kennel, uh, bylaw, um, noise is not concerned by any means. And the group has, uh, yet to begin fundraising efforts, but is eager to get underway. And there will be, uh, of note as well too, as I've mentioned in the, in the memo, there would be a small increase to the turf maintenance expenses on an annual basis. Uh, once the project is completed. And with that, happy to take any questions council may have.
Thank you, Director Vanderhoff. Is there any discussion from council with related, uh, with Counselor Grant?
I know it shouldn't come as a surprise that the dog person has a dog question. Um, I know this is still early days, but what type of turf do we usually put into dog parks? Because I know if it's grass, it does not stay grass for long.
Yeah, through you, Chair Kado, to, to Counselor Grant. That's a good question. We can look into, so the dog park, I should back up. That the dog park in Almyra, um, was, uh, constructed just on an existing open space with the turf. There wasn't much work done there. Um, with regards to that, but that is something we can definitely look into, a more hardy, uh, a more hardy seed mix that can touch base with, uh, with planning staff to, to, to look at an appropriate seed mix. Um, but yes, it is, uh, it often, we, we end up resorting to wood chips and hauling in a few loads of those throughout the year. But yeah, definitely something we can look into. That's a great suggestion. Thank you.
Yeah, just to follow up, just because I, and we're heading into mud season for all pet owners, but, uh, it might be some conducive to just forego seeding at all and just bring in the wood chips right away.
Um, speaking from personal experience, I, I stumbled upon the dog park last summer. Oh, and I was taking my son to soccer and it's a fascinating place. I love it there. So, um, any expansion on that is, is good news to me. So, um, any other thoughts? Um, there is no recommendation on this. It's an information purposes only, I believe. So that concludes the staff reports, uh, brings us to other business. Are there any reports or updates from council? Yeah, just for good measure, um, outstanding activity list, uh, as of Thursday, March second. Are there any items for discussion on the outstanding activity list? Seeing none. Notice of motion or none. This brings us to the end of our meeting. So would somebody be willing to move and to second in a German? Counselor Grant, this is an easy one. Counselor Bryant, thank you very much. All those in favor. That is carried. Um, council would like to thank all that participated or tuned in to the meeting tonight, uh, on our YouTube live stream. I will remind council to stay connected until we receive confirmation that live stream had stopped. Good night, everyone.